Second, all those in here, please say hi.
Hi.
Hi, motion standing, motion carries. To call the public meeting to order, please stand for the saying of Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Turned over to Superintendent for our two presentations and recognitions.
Thank you. So there's actually three presentations tonight. What we're going to ask is that after the second presentation, we're going to have about a 10-minute recess where people can grab punch and cookies. And then the CSET presentations will follow that. So this evening, it's my honor to present a guest from the New York State School Boards Association. He's a representative with NISBA. He's actually the president of Board of Education of the Sweet Home Central School District. He's here to present a few awards tonight. So if I could call Mr. Scott Johnson to the microphone.
My name is Scott Johnson, here tonight, representative of New York State School Boards Association, also known as NISBA. Here as a member of the Assembly. On behalf of NISBA President Peggy Sutherland, Executive Director Rob Schneider, I want to thank you for lobbying to join. NISBA assists school boards across the state by providing information, advocacy, and training. Several years ago, we created a new service that collects education-based articles from across the state, publishes article links on a daily basis. The service is known as Eclipse. The saying goes that it takes seven positive statements to count of one negative statement. In light of a news cycle that has overwhelmingly been negative and dominated by COVID-19 and dire concerns for the mental health of our children, NISBA created the Goodwill Recognition Program to highlight the countless positive things that happen every day in our schools. This includes district students and staff selfless, uncommon acts of empathy, fair play, sportsmanship, civility, citizenship, service, or charity that benefit those in your district or larger community, and serves as a model for other communities. We publish pictures and highlight recognition ceremonies like the one here tonight on social media, so your work can gain a much wider audience, including those in the highest seats of state government. Please note, there's no application process, and the recognition is unsolicited. Our member relations team reviews Eclipse for articles highlighting these acts of goodwill and using unpublished criteria selects goodwill acts to be recognized with a beautiful certificate plaque. The committee was notified about a commendable goodwill act in your district that deserves special recognition. As I read the article from the net from the newspaper, I couldn't help but be impressed. After going mostly across the state to play two hockey games, and then for the team to return and put down a floor, move furniture, all I can say is, wow, that's awesome. At this point, if we've got somebody from the hockey team, then we would like to step forward and tell us a little bit about the project.
We have one of the captains of the team, Anthony LaGreca, and one of the coaches, Ryan Coyne.
Thank you very much for this award. Our team is greatly appreciative of this. It was a great experience that I'm sure we'll all remember for the rest of our lives to be able to help out the community and the veterans to just do something very good for us.
Yeah, to compliment that, it was a great experience. This was a special team. We've done a lot outside of the community between that and then Sabo, we worked with every Tuesday night as well, skating with them. It was, you know, to us, it's more than a game, it's more than hockey, and these boys really exemplified that, what it was in the community. So we are honored for this award, and we appreciate everything that has been done, and we can't wait to do some more next year.
Awesome, love it. Here's the plaque that we're given, it's, "The NISBA recognition is presented to Niagara Weefield Central School District for your varsity hockey team's thoughtful, selfless volunteer efforts installing the floor for the Western New York Hero Service Dog Training Facility. Your goodwill act and positive contribution to your district and community is to be commended and celebrated." Congratulations, and thank you for having me here to make this presentation. We are proud to have Niagara Weefield as members of the New York State School Boards Association and proud of their great work. Look forward to coming back and recognizing again. Before I leave, we have two board members to recognize. Right, sure, sorry. New York State School Boards Association has also established a recognition program to acknowledge the extensive time and effort required as school board members will continually strive to expand their knowledge and skills for better board governance. NISBA members earn recognition points for participating in NISBA training, opportunities for taking on various leadership roles, and are recognized for four distinct milestones. It is essential to encourage and recognize in the ongoing professional developments efforts of our school board members. As an NISBA ambassador, I'm happy to be here tonight to recognize two members of the Niagara Weefield Board of Education for their ongoing professional development efforts. First, I'd like to recognize Robert McDermott, I'm sorry, okay? Robert has achieved the first level of the leadership training, totally, and that's 75 points, and I'm hoping to continue on the rest. Next, I'd like to recognize Michael Lee, who reached level two, is recognizing the board excellent support, congratulations, Michael. Again, congratulations, Michael. And also as a person who has received these training awards as I've gone along, I do have to commend you. It takes some time to earn these things, and your efforts are well worth it, and I encourage you to keep going on to the other parts. Lastly, if we can get one more round of applause for everybody, if you're a school board members. Finally, on behalf of the New York State School Boards Association, thank you for having me here to present these recognitions. I thank you to the board for your ongoing service for the betterment of schoolchildren and communities of New York.
And next, we're going to be honoring our winner athletes, so if Mr. McKenna could step forward, please.
Thank you, Mr. Alonish, of the Board of Education. As Mr. Alonish has stated, we're going to honor our student athletes of many different realms here tonight from winter sports. Just one side note, it was an exciting afternoon, this afternoon, around 2:30. We had our late signing day, the first one's in November, and the second one was here today. And I can mention too, I would probably say 100 people that were there, which could have been 18 student athletes are moving on to play at the next level. So it was an amazing, amazing afternoon. I just wanted to give that in because, you know, other than, you know, that date at the end of June, when everyone's crossing that stage, the special day to see our student athletes, those that many are going to see this evening, move on, and we know how much, you know, as parents, we know how much as board members, these coaches and specifically student athletes work so hard and be able to see them move on to the next phase, it's just a tremendous honor for me and for them as well. So I definitely wanted to recognize them, so let's give them a round of applause. But here tonight, we're here to honor our winter sports athletes at like three phases, if you will. And we're super happy that we're able to recognize so many student athletes just for one season. We have our individual athletes first, and then our state participants, and then our team honors, which would be sectional finalists, NFL champions, and so forth. So without further ado, again, I might be changing a couple of things around a little bit later, because I was just notified two seconds ago that Boys Baseball Team is one out of the way, they're in the backyard, they might be able to make it towards the end of this presentation. So first person on our list, unfortunately, she can't be here today. She was our scholar athlete for winter sports. Incredibly hard, especially in the winter, there's so many talented and very tremendous student athletes. We're very happy to announce that she, the scholar athlete again, is the one that we've seen in the back of the Buffalo News, for those that still see the Buffalo News. Katie Tina, girls basketball. The next three, Xander Fletcher, he's got two awards, Special Awards Cup, and also Sean Watson, they're baseball players, so we'll hold out for a moment on that. Next to that, we do have here today Miranda Gatto. If you're not familiar with it, the Police Athletic League in Niagara Falls puts on a wonderful dinner for all the Niagara Frontier teams, some Niagara County schools, some Erie County schools, and they pick a, we get to nominate, each of those schools nominate a male and female athlete. And Miranda Gatto is a Police Athletic League 2023 female nominee. Okay, at this time, we're going to step into the state recognitions. Amazing, right, that I can stand here, state that we have three teams, individual teams, that can be recognized that participated in the winter sports only at the state championship level. So I'm going to bring forth Mr. Rick Sweeney and Mr. Bill Platts, our wrestling coaches, to talk first about our first inaugural, which is pretty cool, our first inaugural girls state championship.
Well, my name is Bill Platts. I'm the girls wrestling coach this year, I'm also an assistant varsity coach for wrestling and the JV coach for wrestling. This was our first year of having a girls team. We hope to grow that next year. We had 11 girls on the team, four of them made it to states this year, so. Gianna Sheary, the senior, is not here today. And then, rest of these young ladies are seventh and eighth graders. So we have, at the end, the Bayasonic. One of match at states, sorry, two matches at states, one match. One match out at states. Lily Pizanca won two matches at states, and Gabby Barone, 100-pound, seventh grader, first state champion in the women's division.
It's like saying with Gabby, Gabby Russell's our varsity 102-pound weight class, she beats everybody there. So the story behind this real quick, she, we worked on a lot of wrestle, because we qualified for this high school state team championship. So she had to wrestle the next day after this tournament, so I don't want to get her hurt. So I felt bad about it, so we let her wrestle, so she went up there and pinned four girls and won the state champ. She's the only section six girl that won it, so she's the first and only one right now, state champ, section six for the girl. It's like saying, the only seventh grader.
I was okay with that. Okay, and it was just so cool watching those girls for a year. And when I got the text from coaches about Gabby, it was, yeah, it was cool, it was a cool experience. Okay, at this time, I'll move on to the state, the boys swimming team, our state participants, the boys, and we have Mr. Casero, Mike Casero, Monica, Coach Casero.
I want to thank you for allowing me to recognize these gentlemen in front of you. And it's just probably one of my most best experiences of the coach year. I can tell you, it's an honor to be happy about the opportunity to work with these guys, not only as athletes, but as students. We had a great time, and you're looking at probably the most successful athletes ever come through the swimming program here in Niagara Weefield. I'm very proud that I have the opportunity to work with them from this day to this day. I want to recognize them, we went to states this year in Ithaca, and we were one of the, probably the highest ranked Niagara Weefield swim team that we've ever had here in Niagara Weefield. These five gentlemen are great, like, you go to the states every year, I'll take it real quick, and you just hope that your guys can stay the same, the guys all got faster, which is quite a accomplishment to get to see. The first guy here is Paul Wizzle, Paul's the first Niagara Weefield swimmer to ever go 46 and 100 yards freestyle, which puts him on par with some of the top athletes actually in the country going towards colleges. And he's going to St. Bonaventure, I'm sure he will be one of their top swimmers at St. Bonaventure. Aiden Hurley, Aiden comes in every year, he swims just during the season, and he is just fast, like, his arms are strong, if you watch him swim, you can't even count the strokes going so fast in the water. Then Benny Cirillo, Benny's an all-around athlete, then he can swim anything, swims hard and always wants to get better. Benny Cirillo and Jackson Gaines. Jackson is a great leadoff swimmer, he gets up to start, he competes with anybody that's in the pool. And Don Tucary is our young guy, he's our freshman, that was our alternate this year, because he's going to eventually be where these guys are competing at the states. So it is, I tell you, it's an honor to have been able to coach you guys. I'm going to miss him, except Dom, he'll be with me for a few more years. But it's not, and I appreciate you recognizing these gentlemen this year, thank you very much.
Okay, next, we have, we're going to bring back up Mr. Coach Sweeney, Coach Platts. Now, we're going to talk about the other side, the boys wrestling team that also participates in the change.
Yeah, I got the coaches for you. We had an outstanding year this year, we had a young team, so we didn't know whether we were coming back with all the time. Lots of summer programs, helping these kids dominate, they're all little league wrestlers since they're five years old, so they're veterans all the way around. Let's start over at the end there, we got senior Casey Robinson, he's a heavyweight. Casey unfortunately went to states last year, 215, come back weighing 200. So we're here to struggle all year just to wrestle those guys, get 10, 15 pounds, he ended up winning it, and he won away from placing in the states. The next one, a little. Asbell, he, young, again, youth wrestler. He upset a kid who beat him twice this year, and ended up qualifying, he went up there and I think he won it two and a half. He's young, he's got a lot of time going, next one is captain Garrett Chase. He is now a sophomore. He's been wrestling since he was a little kid, his father's a good coach. Whenever we had a problem coaching him, just Dr. Sutherland, he takes care of everything. Garrett did a nice job up there again, returns captain again. Then we got Chico. Chico has been wrestling since he was a little kid, his brother was a suctional, took third to state for us years ago. So he's got that drive now, really surprised everybody in qualifying, and went up there and went away from placing in the state. So he's a backup junior, he's going to come back strong, and we respect the good stuff out of him. Next one is Deshaun Matthews, Deshaun's only a junior, so he's got another year. Deshaun took fifth in the state, lost to a good match against the number one guy who won it, returning place finisher from last year. Again, he's a captain, and we expect big things out of him next year, he wants to go for the title. His big brother, Tremel, he's a senior now. Tremel's been wrestling since he's five years old, the same thing, he'll be wrestling forever, and Tremel's won away from placing in the states again. Unfortunately, he's going to be leaving us this year, but again, we got a good core of kids coming back for next year, and you're going to see that, we're going to do well next year, too. So, thank you. I've got one guy, Chase Richards, I'm sorry, he's playing baseball right now. Chase was an unexpected upset, too, he beat a kid one second, knocked him out of the mat, and ended qualifying. He playing baseball again right now, he's only a ninth grader, so a lot of coming out of him, yeah, that's true, so. Got seven guys, got out of those seven to me, and four are returning, so we're doing well next year, thank you.
Okay, at this time, we're going to move on to our team honors. Our first team that we're going to represent is our boys basketball team. We're sectional finalists. We follow them like many of us did on social media, follow them going to the games at Buffalo State. It was quite a great run going to the sectional finalists. But I do see in the corner of my eye that we do have one individual that participated on that team. And we're going to recognize, Empressy was the individual that I wanted to speak about earlier. This young man to my right, we honored, this is third honor today. We honored earlier today, he's going to go on to Oswego, which is one of the better, I think, one of the best Division III basketball programs in the country, and he's going to play for Oswego basketball, but they got a heck of an athlete, a heck of a baseball player, and a heck of a person. Xander Fletcher, to my right, I had mentioned about Miranda, she was our nominee for girls pale elite. And we got nominees for each program, okay? Xander was the overall pale 2023 male athlete of the year. Congratulations, Xander. It just, again, to me, to recognize that achievement is incredible. We haven't had one in quite many years, so congratulations to Xander. Another achievement that Xander achieved that is very, is very difficult to do, and first team Buffalo News All-West New York, first team All-West New York. Okay, at this time, I'm going to, we're going to recognize this compadres over here, so all the boys basketball players, not up. And as I stated, they were sectional finalists, and I'm going to have a Mr. O'Brien read off their roster to make sure we recognize all those athletes.
And we're not sure who I have here right, Monday I was hearing from their baseball game, in seats and all, so. Again, thank you for recognizing our athletes tonight. This is the first time, I think it's happened in the school history, that we went to three straight finals. We won one, we're also top one this year, but these guys, it's a pleasure to have these guys recognized here tonight. We have Aiden Bennett, Alex Darlik, Evan Yodas is here. Alex Fletcher is here, he was also nominated 13 All-State this afternoon, actually, that came out today. Cameron Greeran, Derek Jones is here tonight, Ty Quichoff, Adam Kyler, Dan Liberty, Matt Pavicic is here tonight. No Cypher, Luke Walk is here, Sean Watson is here, and then Connor West. And most of those guys that is named that are here also play lacrosse, so, but thank you very much.
Just one other player, just so I realize he came in, too, Sean Watson, he was honorable mention of Buffalo News All-West New York, so congratulations. Okay, our next team, once again, we're going to bring up Coach Sweeney and Coach Platts, Niagara Frontier League Champions for Boys Wrestling.
I'll let Bill. I'll let Bill do the reading, I'm going to patch these up real quick. These are the things we get out every year to the kids, and it's got a lot of information. I'll read a little bit off the front page to show you how much this team did this year. I'll hand these out.
So we're 19 guys that earned a varsity letter on the team this year. I think we lose three seniors out of this roster, so, you know, hopefully we should come back very competitive next year. Obviously, not everyone could make it, but I'll give out the roster. Ali Abbas, Monti Abbas, Ethan Asbell, Evan Asbell, Gabriella Barone, Andrew Baron, Garrett Chase, Joseph Chico, Colin Pokenhour, Dante DeBiglia, Don Pike, Braxton Kilgore, Deshaun Matthews, Tremel Matthews, Ian O'Donnell, Dylan Pringle, Chase Richards, Casey Robinson, and Nick Wernick.
You see, I got my back up here, that's why I do so well. When I miss it, he picks it right up. I just want to read a few things that I did, I've been around here for quite a few years, and we had a lot of championship teams. This team really stepped up and created a lot of, broke a lot of records. Besides taking second in the section, losing, we only had, a record was 16-2, we lost to two teams, and they were both in the state finals, so they're both top teams in the state that we lost to. We ended up ranked number 10 because of where we wrestled off back up in the state tournament. We were seven and oh in NFL, we finished second in sections, qualified state championships, we did one and one up the stage, we lost one and one one as a team, we had 13 of 13 wrestlers go to sectionals, never had that done before. We had seven wrestlers qualified for state championships, never did that before. We had a girl state champion, again, never did that before. They have 13 weight classes, so they're all-star team, there should be 13, but we had 15 qualified, because we moved kids in and out of weight class, we had 15 qualified, so. With all that said, this team did a real great job, and I got to tell you, as a school system, you know, I've been to Niagara Falls, I was there for years, I'm here. This school system, athletic tractor is great, this secretary is great, and you guys do a great job really supporting sports. And I think that's why we start winning all this stuff, because when you put into the time and to the culture, we do that, too, you know what I'm saying? And I have a lot of pride when I go to tournaments, we're going to look nice, you know what I'm saying? So looking nice and having the right atmosphere as far as working with teachers and everything, everybody works good. So I thank you for doing what you're doing, and I thank all the teachers and athletic department for doing what they do, nice job.
Okay, again, we're going to leave Coach Platts and Coach Sweeney up here to talk about the inaugural season of girls wrestling. So this was our first year with having girls wrestling team, this year, we were actually combined with Loopport and North Carolina. We were actually sort of the deciding team to take it a step further to sanctioning girls wrestling as a sport in New York State. And the plan is, is next year, right, we're going to have, we're going to have a standalone girls team. Loopport gave two girls that combination, and he gave us three girls in that combination, the rest of the girls on the team were all with girls. I believe we also had six or seven girls on the modified program, so we're hoping, you know, that most of the girls stick around and that the modified girls move up, and we, you know, it's some additional interest. We did have one dueling competition with Choppa Lake, which has been building toward this for a few years, and they have about 25 girls in their program right now, and, you know, kind of spoke them, right? So, you know, we put a tough lineup together and did really well with them, and again, you already mentioned, we had the four girls go to states. You know, we had other girls in the program that were actually qualified for states, but due to injury or other factors, you know, couldn't actually go to the tournament this year, so we're hoping that they come back strong. Of the girls we had, there were only two seniors in the program, everyone else was sophomore down to seventh grade, so we're hoping we can build this strong going forward, I'll read off the whole roster. You guys step forward, when I call your name. Julie Allen Tenter, Addison Goodlander, Emma Green, Madison Monk, Lily Pizanca. Uh, Giuliana Tenter, Addison Goodlander, Emma Green, Madison Monk, Lily Pizanca, Kalen Pryor, Ava Sheary, Gianna Sheary, Devina Satic, Olivia Young, and Gabby Barone. Thanks again, uh, Coach Sweeney, Coach Plots, and just a tremendous effort for taking on that endeavor of, you know, coaching seven state champions, seven, seven, eight participants, and a whole team for boys, and also taking on that endeavor of a whole girls team, too. Uh, it's, it's, it's a great accomplishment to be able to do that, and their passion certainly showed throughout the season, and the results are right here tonight. Uh, at this time, uh, our, our next team I want to recognize is our sectional finalist. Um, five years ago, we sat at this, uh, very, uh, these very tables and brought forth girls, uh, combined hockey. And witnessing and watching their first season when they won maybe one game, I think it was. No games, sorry. And to this past year where they went all the way to the sectional finals. Amazing. Coach Cross Call.
Thank you. Uh, our team is made up of Star Point, Newport, North Tonawanda, and ourselves. Um, we have six girls on our team this year, or from our school this year on our team. Um, like he said, from year one, absolutely nothing. Um, that was a rough year. Built, we built quite a bit off of that, though. Um, we have a lot of high-character players, um, from our school. Frankie's been with us since day one, and. Um, it, it really helps build this program. I mean, section championship was a, a pretty big deal. Um, our league is very competitive and is proud of what we've accomplished in the short time that we've been a team. Uh, our roster is Frankie Williamson, Giuliana Blazer, Maddie Puff, Gabby Puff, Abby Zimmerman, and Lily Vessel. Thank you.
Nice to see them grow and grow as athletes, student athletes, if you thought that camaraderie wished to have with the other schools as finalists. Uh, at this time, I'm gonna bring up Coach Point, and he's gonna be talking about another sectional finalist. Uh, the participated at the Key Bank Center this past winter for boys hockey.
Promise you, they're faster than guys than you know them. Um, we want to thank you for recognizing us. Uh, it's been kind of forgotten, so this is a great event for the, for all teams. Um, you know, last couple of years, it's been a big hit for the community, just to get it out there and, and get recognition of these teams, but, um, we had very high expectations for this team, this was, this was a special team. Uh, over the last couple of years, you know, it's our fifteenth year in the Federation. Um, we've been at ten sectional championships, a couple of state finals and semifinals, and we had a little bit of a hiccup the last couple of years. But between last year and this year, this team has really turned around and creating that winning culture that we kind of really want to recognize. Um, but I guess I'll, uh, we, we ended up a little shorter than we wanted to, probably a lot shorter, but we still made the section finals, and we're, we're really proud of this group. They, um, they really showed us something, but outside, even outside, uh, between the community was a huge deal for us. Um, you know, between the Western Europe heroes and the Saba, every Tuesday, uh, we were invited to the Saba banquet at the Buffalo Convention Hall, which we had about fifteen hundred people, they invited us, they paid for us dinner, dancing with the, you know, um, the kids, it was just a great event. Um, they've, they've even built a lot of relationships through some of our players, and really connected with some of those guys, and, and vice versa, but, um, we have senior Roman Adamschek, uh, junior Jacob Amheim, senior Michael Beaver, senior Evan Belter, juniors Jason Cirillo, senior William Cobal, junior Robert, um, Del Santi, senior Aiden Ernst, sophomore Nolan Haley, junior Andrew Ritzik, junior Pearson Jacobs Ash. I rarely ever see his girlfriend Pearson, so it's a little bit weird to me as a fan. Um, senior Joshua Kizer, sophomore Carson Kalusny, junior Jason Kinder, senior Anthony La Greca, senior Sean La Rock, George, junior Eastern Larrabee, senior Joseph Muni, sophomore Adam Perry, senior Nicholas Simon, senior Jacob Smith, junior Robert Wegman. There's about half of the players here, a lot of Mara and McCross and other sports as well. Um, or even hockey, as you know, hockey is kind of a full year thing, but we want to, uh, I want to congratulate you guys, it was an amazing season, um, in behalf of, you know, me and Rosin. Uh, this was a special team, we seem as we wish we could, you know, as good luck as possible, always come back, once you've talked and always talked, and so, thank you board, thank you for recognizing us, and we really appreciate it.
Yeah, just another amazing achievement, being around that group for a while there is they made their run to the, you know, to Key Bank Center for the sectional finals, getting to know these kids. And, you know, as we saw in that first presentation, they're, they're great athletes, but they're, they're, they're great people. And they turned out to be great individuals watching it from, again, on the ice, off the ice, and it is a great kudos to Coach Point and Coach Rosin, who developed their leadership, uh, in coaching this team, and always stress about the whole athlete, right? You talk about that, oh, I think that's just what you do in practice, that's what you do on the ice, is what you do off the ice, and it was exemplified certainly, certainly this year. So, congratulations, had a great season. Uh, we're gonna bring back up, uh, Coach Casaro again for boys swimming and diving, they're also Niagara Frontier League Champions, Coach Casaro.
Thank you again to recognize our swimming team. Um, real quick, my coach shares from the Niagara field quite a while ago, my coach was Ellen Nichols. You know, Ellen Nichols always says, you're all in star, you're weakest link, so every one of these guys is important, this league championship. We don't sit anybody, nobody is on bench, everybody participates, so we need every person to participate and be, um, contributing, and all these guys do. Not everybody's here, so I'm gonna recognize everybody, but gentlemen, um, when I say your name, if you are here, would you step forward so the board can recognize you? I'll start with, um, Aiden Bradfield McKenzie, Aiden's our, our diver, did a great job. Vinnie Cirillo, multiple sport athlete. Jacob Francios, who is not here tonight, Joe Gavix, who's not here tonight, Danny Henderson, not here tonight. Aiden Hurley, we recognized earlier, King of State participant. Dylan Isaac, one of our young guys, seventh grade, who fit right in, is gonna, you're gonna hear a lot about him going forward, so he'll be back up here for a long time. Jackson James, all-around swimmer, athlete, student, recognized going states. Michael Mosseri, who's not here, young eighth grader, who you will also be seeing a lot of going forward. Luke Mosseri, who's not here tonight, Simon Polak, who's not here tonight, Michael Mvali, Andrew Redman, Henry Rick, who is here tonight, also hockey player, goalie, will swim anything, horses tail off every single practice, Kyle Stotter, backstoker, swims his tail off also, Aiden Tabnera, who can swim anything and will swim anything when asked to, never says no. Um, Cameron Thomas, senior, who's not here tonight, Ian Tweed. That's Ian, swims, swims very hard, Lucas Tyler, not here tonight, Paul Whizzle, Von State, um, again, our only sort of ever go forty-sixth in Niagara field history. Dominic Sukeri, ninth grade, again, you'd be, will be up here again with Dominic, Derek Gunsworth. Participants are gonna be a Darcy athlete next year, Carson Davies, Carson's here. This is our team, I want to recognize Coach Pilcher at the end, who is also working with these guys, this has been a fantastic group. All of you to be part of it, everybody here in Niagara field, be proud of these guys, they are exceptional athletes, and well worked on, thank you, gentlemen.
At this time, that concludes, uh, a recognition of our winner sport athletes, again, thank you for giving us the opportunity to recognize these kids, and as you can tell, they, they worked extremely hard to get to this point, and, and all their endeavors, I don't know, of course, so thank you very much.
We're standing recess until, uh, seven fifty-five.
Right, our C sub presentations from, uh, our secondary buildings, so high school and middle school. And who's going first here, okay, our principal, E.T.M.S., come on.
I'm just gonna lower this a little bit, a little bit. Good evening, thank you for the opportunity to share our C, our C sub. I did place a copy on your, um, sections, so. Oh, it's theirs, yeah. So, I, I want a little low tech, but next year, watch out. Uh, so when you look at our seat up, uh, let, let me tell you a little bit about the process. The staff was definitely involved in each step of the goals, and what exactly is it that we are doing, and what we are expected to do. So, this was a hundred percent teacher input and staff input, it went to all the stakeholders in the building to provide that feedback. So, if you look, you know, if you look at goal one, really the purpose of goal one is that we want to provide our students, our staff, and our community the assurance that we are a safe and secure, uh, place for students to be, and really to have them know that this is where they belong. So, how do we do that? And if you notice in some of the examples of how we did that, um, you know, when parents now come in, we have a beautiful foyer entrance that you can't proceed any further. Those assurances are, is what makes the middle school at this point a place where parents want to send their students, because you know that they're going to be safe. So, when we look at those, we also provide services for families as well. If you look at our family support center, what a wonderful attribute to this district, because we are, you know, the saying is, if you take care of a student's need and their family's needs, then they're ready to learn, and that's really what we've done, and part of our initiative in our buildings and in our districts is to do that. We have a wonderful one program, which again, it's where all students belong, that's what that means, and so we want to ensure that this is where everybody belongs. And we can highlight that. One of the things that I'm most proud of right now is the Equity and Education, the District Committee. Through that, we have been able to implement and highlight, um, Native American Week. We've also been able to highlight, um, our diversity and inclusion, we've been, our library program, um, with the new leadership. We also have been able to partner with the National Federation of Just Communities, and you'll see in goal two how we've embedded them in our, um, daily classes, so that students are receiving that as well. We did continue with our after-school program as well, we do have a number of students that, um, rely on that for us, sixth, seventh, and eighth grade. And it's interesting that, you know, parents are very supportive, and they often say, oh, no, they don't have a choice, they're not getting on that bus, please let them know they're staying. So, it's really provided us a great guide, um, with that. One of the things that we did today, or this year, was, uh, the invisible mentor, and from that, the staff received so much information. Because we also sent out a student survey, and those student surveys included questions about who can you go to? What are some of those attributes of school that you enjoy? What are some of those things that you don't enjoy? And really through that survey from the students, we learned three things. Number one, that, you know, sometimes students are not kind to one another. Number two, they would like electives, more choices in what they're doing, and number three, the lunch food. You know, which is always the typical thing, how do we make that better? But really, when we focused on those first two pieces, um, that is, as it continues, that's some of the work that we'll be doing PD over the summer, and what we've continued to do, what we started doing as of January. How do we build our character right program with the input of teachers and the longevity of that? When we look at goal two, uh, with the district continuing to provide learning experiences, we took a different approach this year. It's what data can we use in order to learn and know kids? What data can we use in order to build our practice in the classroom? And what data can we use to share with families that, that really help their children? So, we've, uh, our data, uh, data-driven instruction and placement is something that we really focused on. We looked at not only our AIS program of the criteria, and how do we use the data? How do we progress monitor, and how do we know that kids are succeeding to our accelerated courses? What's the criteria for those? So, we really, really took the time, worked with the teachers, and really established some of those guidelines and protocols for that. We are in the middle of really looking into culturally responsive teaching through DEI of how do we implement those pieces in the district and in our curriculum? So, we are currently doing the book study for, um, for this year. Uh, we are almost done with our first one, uh, with Dr. Jovan Hunter through, uh, Buff State. And then we are going to proceed probably in September with some PD in having teachers work together to build their curriculum on that. One of the things that is always, um, really nice to see, particularly being part, because we have many different teachers in different parts and, in, um, in the different communities, is how much we really get to know our kids. We know kids, not only who they are, their names, but also a lot about them, what they like, what they dislike, what their families, what are the needs of the families, and it's really eye-opening and heartening that we're able to get that information, and then based on that, when we talk to the families and we talk to the students, you can tell, they're like, wow, you really know me, or you really know my child. So, we've really opened up that communication and kind of broke down some of those barriers with our families. In goal three, you know, ultimately, the goal is to, uh, let the students and staff know, again, that how do we engage them? How do you know that this is a place where you need to be? So, we've looked at engagement of students and families through our clubs, through our concerts, through the playing, through sports, academics, um, Na- Junior National Honor Society. So, what is really nice is that we are recognizing students throughout, student of the month. Um, our kind, our kindness tree, we continually celebrate all the positives that are happening in our building, and oftentimes, it's interesting, because I do, oftentimes I will call parents and say, hey, I just want to let you know so-and-so, what a great job, and it's interesting when you get at the other end, wait, are you talking about my child? And I'm like, yes, I am. So, it's really nice to just make those phone calls to and connect with families. One of the pieces that we've really utilized to our families is the mobile counseling. Um, we have multiple families that are, that still have needs, you know, mental health needs and students. Although we think that, you know, the twenty twenty COVID hasn't impacted families, we're still seeing some of the after effects of that, and families just need that extra support, so being able to provide that along with the family cares program as well for our staff is something beneficial, too. You know, oftentimes, we do so much in recognizing students and families that we forget about the teachers. So, during faculty meetings, I too like to highlight our, our teachers in what I call the teacher's crudo awards. And these are things where I catch teachers doing something that's extraordinary. And believe it or not, I'm down to like my last twenty teachers, because they are so extraordinary, and these are things that I highlight, and they appreciate it because they know that I'm watching, that I'm listening, and then I admit their colleagues, because oftentimes I'll get nominations from their, uh, colleagues. So, it's really wonderful, um, to hear that, and, and they really appreciate that. I like to work in partnerships, our HSA, um, just an incredible piece, and actually, they have a meeting today that I'm not there, but they understood. Um, you know, we're in constant communication, and really, they're like, what can we do to help support the learning that we have in the building, and they, they are just a great resource, and I can really call them on, you know, anything, just down to volunteering, just the basics, volunteering. Hey, can you help count this? Yep, yep, I'll have five or six parents right there, right at my doorstep, just wonderful. You know, communication is really the key, and it's really, how do we, how do we let families know that they can call? And I'm gonna listen, and we're gonna listen, too, so that customer service piece, um, is really something that we've been focusing on as well at the middle school in order to ensure that, you know, my mantra is, I want families, students, and teachers to know that this is truly where they belong. Any questions? You can read the, you know, the pointed points of what it is that we do, but in a nutshell, it's all in here. Thank you.
Thanks for moving the mic down. No, you're welcome. I didn't want to embarrass you guys.
Um, good evening, everyone. Yeah, like, like the middle school, um, our goals are relatively the same. We're all here for kids. Uh, every goal is designed in some fashion to have an impact on students. Uh, every goal is designed in some fashion to have an impact on students. Uh, we, we did, you know, we've given you guys a bunch of different things. Um, one that has a red cover, uh, we've, we put up on the um, the screen. So if you can look at it either way, the one with the red cover um, pretty much is an outline of the detailed uh, CSAT plan. But when we, we design things and, and we go through each of these different goals, um, even though students may not believe some of these things are uh, directed at them, everyone in some fashion does have an impact on students in our building. So when we look at, at goal number one, uh, you know, the healthy, inclusive and supportive environment, you know, the, the SRO on campus is valuable to us. The new addition of the school safety officer is incredibly valuable. You know, with us, you know, hardening uh, the entrances and looking uh, forward to the um, the, the security monitors, the uh, that's going to be a huge, have a huge impact on our building to help students feel safe. And, and the community feels safe, the weapons detection system. Uh, we had, we've gone to just that single point of entry, which allows us to, you know, really focus and pay attention to what's coming in our doors. Uh, the cameras that we have are exceptional. Um, exceptional to the point where, you know, if a student, if something happens to a student, a student reports something, uh, we have question about what it is, we can look at the camera and we can see detail about what happened, uh, how it happened uh, in defense in, or in support of students. Um, you know, we, we do our fire drills, we do our lockdown drills. Uh, the last bullet there, um, on May 24th, in, in conjunction with Lewiston Police Department, we are going to be doing a traffic safety event um, with, you know, crashed cars. And that's for our seniors and it's designed primarily as an awareness because we know that prom and, and those other things are coming up. And we want to ensure that our students have some knowledge of the potential of, of, you know, things that could be harmful to them.
So the next part here discusses kind of the healthy portion of this goal. And I think it's really important that we really emphasize this every day. Our students are uh, learning, growing and, and doing a lot of good things. Um, in some ways it ties directly to safety, in some ways it ties directly to support. But what you're seeing up here is certainly, you know, about getting the students resources so they can live and, and have a healthy life. Um, obviously we have guest speakers coming into our health programs. Uh, we have the kids escaping drug partnership as well as North Point Council. Uh, we have the chant program, the Community Health Alliance of North Tonawanda. For vaping to help students not just, you know, stop vaping, but ultimately to teach them ways, teach them strategies and connect them to resources. Because an addiction is a really hard thing to break. And the same thing now, um, with the expansion of marijuana legalization across the state. Uh, the THC program is, has been something we've been enacting this year to help combat some of those issues that our students directly face every day. And giving them a, a, in a good sense, a healthy alternative, a, a healthy opportunity to do things after school is so beneficial. Either the extracurricular sports, um, the extracurricular opportunities, but we have like after school weight room. We have after school clubs and activities that we'll talk about in a little bit. Uh, but just all of those opportunities are so beneficial for our students, giving them something positive to focus on instead of those other things that we have to, you know, fix later or help address later.
The, the inclusive, the inclusive part of uh, goal number one uh, really is student voice. We, we listen to our students. Uh, we have smart, smart students here and they're very perceptive. And you know, as part of the diversity and equity committee, when we have teachers and students on that committee, um, we meet often with our, our class officers, our class presidents, impromptu conversations with students at lunchtime. To sit down and have conversation with them about a variety of topics. Uh, it provides information for us and it, again, our kids, they know what's happening. And it, we depend on them in a lot of ways. Uh, the invisible mentor program, similar to the middle school, you know, the survey done by students to identify what teachers they have connections with and identifying students that have no one, uh, allows our counselors then to reach out and help make those connections. Um, and as long as Jeff Hazel's here, I'm going to ask him to say a word about uh, upcoming STEM programs.
Okay, moving on. Did you, did you want to say anything? I, I don't want to lose you out.
I, I think you got it.
We got.
So under, under the support section, uh, Eleanor did a really good job of talking about this. Uh, obviously a lot of it applies to the entire campus or district, but uh, we really see a ton of students each and every day take advantage of the student learning center and you're going to hear about that in a wonderful presentation from Austin. We're really glad we have him and helping us lead that program. Um, but I think the other thing we're looking at here is the Family Resource Center has been such a beneficial thing. Having a place to, when a student comes down there in crisis or their parents don't know where to turn, having somewhere that we can say, hey, we have a person, we have a place that you could talk to and obtain that help. Uh, Niagara County has a lot of missing pieces, it seems at times, and it's very hard to find a place to turn. And Kara Kirk has done a phenomenal job of, uh, at least highlighting those places that are available and making those connections. So we can call and say, we need help with XYZ and she's like, hey, I got a person. We're going to get you at least in touch with them tomorrow to start the process. And that's been so helpful. Uh, the caring closet's awesome. They, you know, have the, have the opportunity for our students to be able to not just pick up like food from their food pantry, which is like almost like half the size of where we are right now with just things for our students to take home every single day that our families that are need. But the caring closet with donated clothes, with donated materials, uh, goods that the students need for hygiene. I can't tell you how many times I'll walk a kid down because they don't have a shirt to wear or they don't have, you know, they forgot deodorant. It's great that I can't just be like, I'll go home or, you know, get this tomorrow. I'm going to give you something to take home and it's so awesome to have that so those kids feel included and they're not missing out on school. Um, the agency partnerships up here is huge. Obviously Kara has a wonderful connection with the Family Resource Center and everything that's available around us at all times. Um, but also the partnership with like the North Point Council, like we talked about before, is just so beneficial to providing those kids who are in a moment of addiction or struggle, a resource that they have that they can turn to. Not just, oh, stop vaping or stop smoking and go to this place outside. We're going to bring this group in, you're going to meet with them and come back to school maybe later that day. And then uh, obviously the mental health staff has been such a huge uh, impact for our building. And I can't stress that enough, the extra grant funded, you know, the council, the social workers, psychologist, post, pre, post, whatever you want to call it COVID, hopefully we don't have to say the word again. But um, our students really are, are struggling, I think, across the board. And it's so important to have those resources when that kid's struggling, of someone to go to and to reach out.
Yeah, we're, we're going to skip uh, goal number two and come back to it. So if you got, take a look at goal number three. Um, the whole engagement piece and what we don't show for the things we've provided here. Um, everybody saw at the beginning of the board meeting this evening, you know, the athletic component. Uh, there, there's nothing that draws a community together more than students participating and engaging in those types of activities. Because it does draw families across the board, the spectrum of folks all working together for a common cause. So that's not listed, but that's critically important to um, the environment, the high school especially. Um, but what we have listed is we do know that um, our Native American population is very valuable to us because it, it presents to us, and in my case, coming from somewhere else, you don't know a lot about that culture, that culture awareness piece, how they engage, how they fit. In learning about that, um, really broadens people's understanding um, of, of other folks. Um, when, you know, Jamie Gilbert and uh, her Native American club plan activities and we have celebrations for unique or special days in their culture or the kids go and, and dance and put on all of these uh, things for us. It really opens your eyes and uh, I know that our, our other students in the building stand back in awe and you know, they, they really appreciate that. Um, our, our vocal and instrumental music programs, we've had a variety of concerts this year. The last concert we had actually was a combined concert chorus in band together. But we also, we, we did it with the middle school students. And you know, a lot of that was um, to share uh, the type of performance across the grade levels and, and help element or middle school students see what the high school is all about. High school parents remember where their students were when they were middle school students. Um, we fill the auditorium and it was really nice to see. And we do have a couple more concerts coming up. Um, School Musical, um, a little different this year. It wasn't necessarily the Disney variety, so it did attract a different type of audience, but it was a great show, guys and dolls. Tammy Dobie uh, does the children's theater where all the elementary students come over and they get to see high school students put on little one act or short stories. Um, it, it's engaging for them, you know, the oohs and the ahs and the cheers, um, really help our kids, boost our kids. Um, you know, to, to continue to perform in that fashion. Uh, the orientation programs, we, you know, in August, we're, we're going to be doing it again. We're going to have our um, incoming freshman students come in. Parents are going to have a program in the auditorium while the students do something different. You know, we'll make sure that they have the hot dogs, chips and ice cream, that type of thing. And, and welcome them the best we can to the high school. We'll get a tour of the building, teachers come in, uh, so we can make a connection with uh, teachers to students. And, and that's always a good weather, uh, a valuable experience for everybody. And you know, last thing I'm going to share with you is the, the career center. Uh, you know, in, in a lot of places, it's a, it's a counselor driven type of thing. Um, we do have someone that is specific to those activities. We're sharing that person right now with one of the elementary schools and we look forward to incorporating that and is more of a counselor role in the future. But the connections with colleges, the application, uh, be, putting together a college application, the financial aid component. Um, all the, all the visitations we get from the military and from careers are valuable to, to broaden our kids' horizons.
So I got the fun part of this, this slide here. So it's really awesome to come here whenever there's a spirit week going on or whatever, there, especially during the holidays. There's so much that we have that, that is just, uh, the kids are excited, the kids are here, they're, they're engaged, they're participating. They're decorating, you know, glass, uh, window panes. Um, having the students just have those opportunities is huge, building that connection to school. And I think, you know, this group really i- is starting to get to that point where we're coming back from maybe that like COVID disconnect. Uh, but where they're enjoying the process of being here. I mean, each homecoming, it seems we have, there's more and more kids coming to, more families coming to. It's great to have like that community sense, uh, you know, rejoin the process here. Uh, obviously, like I said, the holiday spirit week, the season of giving, they do so much stuff uh, with the student council, interact club. The 1201 classes are so involved with setting the stuff up, help organizing it, help uh, you know, making signage. All of that is an awesome opportunity and it obviously pretty much all of December is amazing. Uh, existing clubs, these things have gone on for the longest time. But again, you know, we're back to the point where students are able to join them, participate and do great things. So we're really excited and we're really excited for the opportunity um, to have some of the new activities that were, you know, grant funded. Uh, photography club, songwriting club, the talent, take another look at teaching club. Uh, really bringing students in to be educators, getting them excited around the world of education, having them partner with other um, schools in the local area and building that networking, I think is so important as we churn talent and bring people, you know, Niagara Wheatfield students back here to ultimately teach in the future. And obviously offering the tutoring for our students to help remediate where there's, you know, some gaps and some struggles. So we're really excited for those opportunities to not only be here, but to continue for a little bit at least.
And, and we'll go to, go to goal two, number two. Um, obviously we have faculty meetings, we, we have, you know, uh, class meetings. Um, gen- generally, general opening day types of things. Um, but most recently, we've had a lot of discussion about curriculum, individual department meetings about curriculum moving forward. Um, you know, teachers are learning about the dynamic of the community, whether it's enrollment or whatever the case is. Um, but we're looking for some new ways to provide instruction, whether it's through new elective courses. Um, or, or, you know, trying to bolster the students that struggle through some form of AIS. Um, that, that's difficult at the high school level, uh, to really provide. Um, you know, we're staffed pretty tightly, uh, we have been. And we try to accommodate a lot of learning through, through the classroom. And we do have uh, this year, our, our student learning center. And uh, we're eventually going to ask Austin to do, to talk about the student learning center. For those of you that didn't see it on the walkthrough, uh, we think it's very valuable for us, not only from the academic piece and the social emotional piece. Um, but a lot of our students struggle, and I'm going to use the word COVID, struggled coming out of COVID. Um, there's some anxiety about coming to the high school for younger students. Uh, there's, you know, some individuality that students uh, express. Because, you know, for a long time, they weren't able to gather and do things. So, you know, our, our learning center has broken down some of those barriers and Austin's going to have a chance to talk about that in a minute. Um, we list up there, the freshman orientation, we spoke about that briefly before. Um, we have a tremendous uh, continuum of services for our special education students. And I will say that um, the investment in helping students that struggle through our, in, in our special education program um, is intense. And, and our teachers take a lot of pride in helping students achieve or realize individual daily successes. Um, in, in our 12 one class, when, you know, given the opportunity, you know, students that you wouldn't think would engage in a particular way are driving instruction. Uh, it, it's really, it, it's heartwarming to see that and our teachers appreciate that. Um, curriculum and professional development, we know that this year is the first year of the US history exam. It, that's a new curriculum, it's a next gen curriculum. Next year is the implementation of Algebra One. So we're going to be doing a lot of PD and Ryan's going to be part of that over the summer for Algebra One. Um, and then, you know, that we do, you know, as, as we are obligated to, like, you know, our students that have suspension from school, they're here every day from 2:30, 4:30. And we have certified teachers working individually with students in that program to ensure that they don't keep behind in, in their academic stuff.
Alright, so uh, last couple of things up here, obviously technology's huge. And I, and I think, and I thank everybody for working hard to really help with this. And Mr. Hazel can correct me if I'm wrong, but you know, having some money and the ability to utilize uh, the technology and bring it to the rooms. I mean, you can even see it here with the new projectors, they're super nice, the students are able to see them from a distance. And I think having the ability to have the displays in all the rooms uh, is so important to our instruction. It's so important to our students who, uh, you know, are kind of used to that in some rooms, maybe not others. But it's great to have that now, you know, in almost every room and by a short amount of time here in every possible room. And having that rolling out so our students can now interact and have that next level of learning. And obviously the new hardware, whether it's in the form of like new computers coming through, more Chromebooks, more laptops. Having that technology available is so important for our students and we, as we learn and grow. Uh, ASAP, the after school assistance program is a really beneficial uh, tool for us after school that our students are able to participate in, in touring, that our students are actually the tutors. And they come and they uh, help support other students that might need some assistance. So it's not just our teachers running it, but our students are helping our students, which is a great, you know, give back from our community to our community. Uh, CPA program still does continue after school. We offer that for uh, select students who really fit that mold that need that little extra bump of support. Obviously Regents exams, local exams, midterm exams, they're all back in full swing. So we're, we're running those schedules, I believe you guys should all have those. Um, you know, we're looking forward to hopefully getting back to them this year and getting that process going. And then we talked about intermural extracurricular opportunities, we're still really excited for that. Um, but the big thing we're really excited for is Austin prepared a 45 minute walkthrough for you for the student learning center. Uh, it's comprehensive here, so uh, we're going to put them on the spot a little bit.
A- as he comes out, it, you know, it, it's, this is a unique room. And the objective was, we, we're going, what, what we did is we moved our freshman sophomore junior study hall to a large room gathering right next door to the library where Austin uh, runs the student learning center. If you were to walk in, you might not recognize the amount of learning that's truly occurring for these students in this class. So in, in Austin's doing a great job, so we wanted to give him a chance.
Alright, thanks for having me. Um, I'm Austin Dublin. Nice to meet some of you. For the ones that I don't know, okay. Um, so baseline data, um, it was identified, there was a major gap in learning, uh, again, after the pandemic. Sorry to bring it up again, um, but we created a space in the library here at the high school. Um, that was the perfect environment for learning and comfort for all students. That was the focus, just a welcoming spot for anybody to come in whenever they could. Um, when we first started the program, our first week, we had maybe 10 students in total. Um, after that, we started to see up to 70 to 100 students a day, up to 53 was our maximum that I could count um, during one singular period, which was kind of insane, but awesome at the same time. Um, it's a perfect mix between students who need AIS type support, general school support, some sort of emotional support, whatever it might be. Or even our high-end students, our APs, our honor students coming in to further their education and pick our brains a little bit. Um, so what do we do? Well, students come in anytime that they want, when they are free. So any period in their schedule, like a lunch or a study hall, or maybe if they have an early dismissal and they need a place to hang out before sports, they can come in and get some work done. Um, they can work directly with one of our teachers. Currently we have three certified teachers that can work one-on-one with the students, which is a great opportunity for us and also for them. We get to build a relationship, they get to get some good learning done uh, with a teacher who is certified in their subject area. We've got technology access for all students that can fit in our space. We, we allow 20 at a time now. Um, there's Chromebooks, there are desktops, depending on what the students might need. Um, larger tables for big projects, big poster board projects, drawings, artwork, whatever it might be. It's a space where anything can be accomplished by our students. Um, additionally, uh, we provide Apex support for our students, sorry. That's our online learning program. So if a student has a That's our online learning program, so if a student has a credit recovery to do, we kind of manage them and track their pace and kind of keep them on track as we go through. We took a student student survey, it was completely blind, we didn't have their their names or anything. And these are some of the highlights that I recorded from that. So the question one at the top is, one thing that surprised you about the SLC, which is Student Learning Center? The top result, forty five point eight percent said the positive or relaxed environment was the key that they liked the most. What brought them there? A lot of the time, students were referred by a friend, we have posters up around the building, we did a quick presentation during the first week of school for all the class levels. How this SLC has affected you, top result, grades have improved, a lot of the students, that is their goal in school is to get that good grade. That's what goes home with the parents see on the report card, it's tangible data that we can record and then look back at. Next question, what change can we make to the Student Learning Center? Of course, they said none. Which, of course, but the next leading answer was to increase the available seating. There are some times where we have to turn students away because there's just too many that we can't, we can't service with the staffing. Final question I put on the survey was, how are your personal relationships affected? Leading result, got closer with existing friends, the next one, which was cooler, is to make new friends and we saw that quite a ton, many different students, different grade levels, mixing friend groups, it was really neat to see. Next up, we have check in data, so when a student enters the Student Learning Center, they've got a check in computer where they type in where they're coming from. What assignment they want to work on, what subject they might be working on. And what period it is, so it's uh timestamp and all that. As of today, I checked, we have thirteen thousand four hundred and thirty six signings, which is kind of cool, it's a big number, I didn't realize. After that first week, seeing only ten students in one full school week, then I'll have accumulated over thirteen thousand signings, which is. Insane, it's a big number for me. So we feature English Science and Social Studies, but we're more than happy to help with any other thing, so really, any student in the building can come in. And get some sort of academic service that they might need for any subject. Bullet point at the bottom that has a star, our data shows that most of the students come into the Learning Center. And they're choosing to give up their lunch or their study hall or their free time to come in and do extra work. So this is not something that's scheduled for them that they're required to come to, it's totally optional and voluntary on their part. Sometimes the counselors do recommend strongly that they visit, but still, it's up to them and it's not scheduled, so to see that many kids come in on their own. This is a testament to how strong the program is. Intended results, so what we wanted to have happen was to fill in academic gaps. Throughout the years of schooling, wherever, whatever the cause may have been, missing school, problems at home. Shutting the world down for a couple of years, whatever it may have been, the goal was to get the students to pass and learn something in school. Sometimes the grades uh progress doesn't show up on the grade report, because when the grades do close, they are passing because they're visiting the Learning Center. But we started um being more diligent with tracking weekly progress reports, printing those out, so that when the grades are pulled, we can kind of see. A parabolic increase in their grades. And we also partner with teachers, direct contact, student referrals. We keep in close contact with the ones who are the most on top of the students who say, hey, this assignment needs to be done, maybe if they can look at that. Or stuff that's late, we can check it and say, hey, you know, we gotta get going on this, so this needs to be turned in. The collaboration is really key to it, because otherwise, we may not know that the student needs help, because it is a voluntary program that they're joining. Unintended results. The primary goal, of course, was to increase the learning, fill in gaps in knowledge and content, but there are other benefits that we noticed almost immediately. First up, social, yeah, social emotional learning, mental health aspect of creating a comfortable space really helped welcome every student into the Learning Center, even into this building. It may have gave them a place to come in during the day or a reason to come to school, but if they're here, that's step one, the next step is to get them into the learning and. All of that other stuff, but making them feel like they belong is really important. Second, our AP students frequently use the Student Learning Center, as I mentioned earlier. The resources available are great, the technology, we have big poster boards, big tables, as I said, so projects are great and getting the certified teachers. Assistance on these high level uh activities, one on one, just furthers their learning even more. Finally, which really cool, I have a little case study, I have a letter for the board members, if you'd like it. From one specific student who moved here from across the country, from Seattle, knew nobody. Brand new student was dropped off, introduced to me by one of the school counselors in the morning, and she visited every day for her birthday periods. And in this setting, was able to make friends, join sports teams, become a scholar athlete, signed today to go to college to be a. A student athlete again on scholarship, pretty neat. So this space not only is it good for academics, but it gives our new students a place to fit in immediately. So they don't need to walk into that crowded lunchroom and look around and not find a place to sit and then feel really unwelcome, so. Big, big benefit, unintended, but still realized benefit from the Learning Center. Wrapping up here, two more things, one, our challenges, we do have some, it's not perfect. Capacity issues, as I mentioned, once last year, fifty three students in one period was wild. While we did have three teachers servicing them all, academically was nearly impossible with that many students. We don't currently have a math teacher centered in the Learning Center, so if there's a math problem that I can't do, something harder than three plus six. That's out of my league, so I have to refer them to the math lab. Final problem that we might face is students who claim to have no work. While they're also failing multiple classes, and in that case, I will look up their grade report, I will see all of these assignments turned in, but the quality might not be good enough to reach that passing threshold. And so in that case, that's when I reach out and collaborate with the teacher and say, hey, can we maybe try this again, I'll work with this student. Directly with this assignment and we'll get it in to whatever standard you might want. Some ways to address these specific problems, a larger space, or maybe find a way to schedule visits one on one. So we don't reach capacity and have to turn students away. A math teacher in the Learning Center or require the student to visit the math lab, so a lot of times they'll come in and they'll say, yeah, I'm not doing so hot in pre calc. But I don't want to go anywhere, but maybe there might be some sort of string we could pull to make them then go to the math lab to really get the help that they need. And then finally, better communication is always key between classroom teachers and the Learning Center teachers. The more we communicate, the more students we can help out, the more in the know everybody is, it just helps stay on top of the students that might need the most attention. And finally, our future plans, going forward, it would be very neat to incorporate CASL Learning to create learning modules that would. Target gaps in learning, so if a student were sick during the sedimentary rock unit in earth science and totally doesn't know it. They might see that unit for the first time in Regents Review in June. And that might be brutal for the student, so if we have modules created ahead of time where the teacher can say, hey, this the student missed a bunch of this one unit. Okay, come on in, we'll fix it, we'll do that unit, because, you know, classroom teachers have up to thirty kids at a time, it's really difficult to pick up. You know, students that might have missed big chunks, especially if you have many different students who have missed different chunks, it's gotta be nearly impossible. Second, uh specific activities and lessons planned for learning gaps, so if a student is identified to not know how to graph very well, that hits many different subjects, it can hit. All of the the core content, all of them could have graphing somewhere within that content or on the Regents examined. Like having some way to know that this learning gap is there and having something prepared ahead of time, so we can get rolling right away, that would be great. And then finally, test taking bootcamp, something I'm gonna take a look at really soon, Regents are coming up um within a couple of months, well. Month and a half, yeah, soon, it's quick, time is flying, but um. Having these test taking strategies, prepare this bootcamp idea where they can come in and we can just hammer test taking strategy, so if they're not a strong test taker, maybe now they will be. And that's pretty much all that we do in the Student Learning Center that I could think of. Cool, yes, oh, thank you.
Just to pat Austin on the back for a second, the young lady that wrote a letter. I observe Austin the day she started and she came in and and said, look, I'm behind, the physics we're doing in class now is not the physics I know from where I came from. And with Austin's science background, he he brought this young lady up to speed, she's an excellent student. And I know that um the opportunity she had there and the connections she was able to make have done wonderful things for her, so it's um. If SEL is a major component of, you know, how we're going to. Help our students, it it's certainly accomplished through our Learning Center.
Austin, I just want to say thank you for not just teaching, but taking a leadership role. Really, really important and you've done a great job there. I know Mr. White has spoken numerous occasions to myself and Mr. Stack about uh what you've been doing in there. So we're really, we're really proud of you and what you're doing with the other teachers in there and all the students. Second, I can't imagine for a second that anybody would miss a sedimentary. So I don't think that that was true, but the rest of the presentation was really great.
Yeah, a couple of questions.
Sure.
First of all, everyone's presentation was excellent and I appreciate that. But but Austin, you mentioned larger space, is it, is it? If we need it, is there an area over there where you can put a hole between rooms to give you that spacing if we needed? And that might be better than.
What?
Knocking walls down. Can I defer?
Yes. I mean, scheduling might be difficult for a student.
Well, it scheduling is tough, because we don't want to take a student out of an academic class unless there's a specific reason the teacher sends them. So we are, we are capturing students from study hall and from lunch, a larger space. We're a pretty big space now, but it would mean stealing some space from our librarian.
And the other question is. You mentioned the food pantry and the clothing. For young, for young students that might need some help there. Is there reluctance from some, you know, when you're so young, you're getting into embarrassing situations, it feels funny. As if you run into that and two, if we do, is there any way to? Hide it, for lack of a better term, to give it to them about exposing it?
You know, Karen Kirk works pretty intimately with families regarding that type of thing, respecting privacy and that type of thing. But we do now have students from our twelve one classroom working in that room, we have National Honor Society students working in that room during lunchtime. So students do take advantage. And there's no stigma attached to it at all. It is it moving forward, will it grow? I'm sure that it will.
If I could just add, you know, a big part of it is counselors making connections, right, with the happens in kids. The other thing that's really neat is that there's now, those, you know, QR codes that kids can take a picture of and they can then set up a time to meet with their social worker to go in there and shop. So, you know, they can, they can say, yeah, I can come right after school. So I think in in that way, it's growing, and. The fact that so many of the resources that. The last year and a half or so that donated have been depleted and that we needed. The 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 significant amount of donations that we just recently received. When it comes to hygiene products, toothpaste, toothbrush, and all those things, it it says that people aren't really taking. Taking advantage of it, but it's it's a, it's a work in progress, right? So that's a good question.
And and we are certainly aware of of that issue. And that room is located right near an exit door. So, you know, we there's, we make accommodations for that type of thing.
And a lot of it too is, we do, we deliver things to homes. When, when we do have those phone calls, also, we have parents that do come, like they make an appointment, this way we get everything ready for them. This way that they can take those things, but believe it or not, we do have many, many students who do access our clothing closets. You know, things happen, you know? Things get spilled, they're not embarrassed, you know, I think we took that stigma because it's like, they know it's not charity, it's, oh, you know what, your pants here, I got something else for you. But we do make those provisions, because there are some of those that that are very sensitive and prideful, so we do make. A lot of accommodations for our family for that.
Very good, we appreciate that.
I'll go just one step further, there's oftentimes Kara will be here at like six fifty five in the morning with just three carts full stuffed wheeling, I'm like, where are you going? Oh, I'm gonna go down here, there's like a drive by drop off, parents coming early in the morning, picking up before anyone even sees. The other thing too is we have our everyday labs program that reaches out for students. If they're not attending school or if they're having trouble, you know, attendance and that kind of stuff. It's like a text message or a message they'll receive on their phone where they could respond, hey, I need some help with XYZ. That gets directly sent over and we get that information, so the student might not even be the one who reports it, we might get it directly from the families and then, hey, here's a box, take this home, okay, cool. So it's really all encompassing of all that, it's great to have.
Very good, thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
The call from both, except the consensus agenda items is submitted. Anything to discuss separately? Not all those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Those are stating. I call for more, except personnel report is submitted. Into separate or this one's? Not that, all those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Aries. Alright, second reading of policies. We have, we'll have the vote for policy sixty one thirty, evaluation personnel, policy sixty five fifty, is it absences, policy thirty five twelve, student physicals. Policy seventy six seventy, new process complaints. Actually, the selection of board and board appointment, hearing officers, policy eighty five fifty, home hospital or instructional instructions. And it's a home by instruction. All those in favor, except in the second reading of the policy, you say aye. Aye, those are stating, she carries. Alright, you have a couple of informational items there, fundraiser and internal claims audit. Report. Practice not here, reports, pretend to report.
Thank you. Mr. Stack first, with hiring.
Thank you. Right now, we're working really hard and diligently in our office on solidifying the hiring processes. That do remain for next year to stay up appropriately for twenty three, twenty four, and also appropriately aligning the current staff that we have. To our needs for our students for next year as well. From that point, we're gonna focus really, really hard on horse bus drivers, bus attendants. Some of the anticipated retirements we have at T trades will be the general focus for this particular summer's work. Moving ahead, so that's pretty much where we are personally.
Thank you. And the superintendent's comments that I had, and I told you, I had mentioned, they're just some of the. The the key points to the New York State budget, which is, has been improved, it's just that the education piece has gone through already, so you can see the highlights there. You know, brain was here, you'll probably talk about the musical coming up, Into the Woods Junior, that's Friday, May fifth, Saturday, May sixth. Both those times are at seven PM and then the Sunday, Matt May, which will be on May seventh at two PM. Our spring sports are off to a great start, I know Mr. Roy kind of mentioned, the only thing that hasn't been great, has really been the weather and the sunshine, I will tell you this, I've heard it from other super attendants. The difficulty in getting games this season, especially. Baseball and softball games, if you don't have turf, have been really, really difficult, so the turf has certainly been beneficial for all of our programs, but particularly those two. This this particular spring, which has been so glad. The budget vote for election is May sixteenth from eight AM to. In the morning to nine PM, held right here in High School LLC. Couple upcoming things to mention at our board meetings, okay, one, the May seventeenth Board of Education meeting, we will be treated to musical performance. I said for students, we will also have our elementary C sub presentations at that meeting. And then June seventh, June seventh is the day where we will have an art show that'll be out in the in the foyer. Between six and six thirty, and then the retirement reception, we actually hold before the meeting in this room between six thirty and seven. And then we will go into our regular meeting, who will hold our executive session afterward, okay? Any questions in there, anything there? Thank you. Yes.
So the pre K, is that gonna help us a lot?
So we we, as as I think we said last time, I think it was ninety four, it's on the presentation, I think it's ninety four extra slots we were given. The question will really be, is can we get students to that program, right, so we're gonna, we're still, we still have a pilot of that, we will. As per as a few drives, oh, with our buses, to see if something we can do for either zero or a little cost and we'll. Get that soon, it's not something that we're gonna be able to put in place for probably next school year, something that we'll be looking at, probably for the future school year, unless the cost is next to nothing. Good. But can I, if I could just say one more thing? But can I, if I could just say one more thing? They, they, meaning the state, did ask for reasons why programs are not able to utilize all their slots if they're not utilizing. Great opportunity there for us to share that, you know, we certainly have the data. And what we're gonna do is we're gonna work with the districts to see if they're in the same, you know, same kind of same, oh, and if they are, then group together and say, look, here's how many kids in our district, here's how many kids in this district. Um, to to send, to set the message that that is something that's certainly preventing kids from participating in the program. So, thank you for that question.
I don't have anything. How many of the uh end, end of budget period?
Thank you. We, we've had a lot of presentations leading up to this one. This is the official budget hearing, so I will go through all the slides. Um, if you have questions, please stop me and they're all gonna look very, very familiar to you. Thank you. This was the Foundation Aid. Foundation Aid is fully funded um eh this year for next year in the twenty-three, twenty-four budget. Um, bottom right-hand corner, you can see what our number is there in the, in the peach color, if that's, that is, um, one point nine million dollar increase. You can see what that is as a percentage, it's eight point four four percent. Uh, the Foundation Aid at the top right-hand corner of this particular slide here. Uh, CPI, as I think many of us know, it was a significant uh increase. We've all seen it. Um, it was eight percent, so that um eight point four four percent is pretty close to the eight percent that we're uh seeing as far as the increase in CPI. Talked about pilots. Um, and does anybody have any questions on how pilots work? I know we've talked about it at the last couple of meetings. Okay. Uh, here is the tax cap levy worksheet. This is something that Alison does, as you know, the number in the bottom right-hand corner was the levy limit, which was two point one eight percent. Or elected to go to two point one eight percent, now that that's what the voters will be voting on on uh May sixteenth. You can see bottom of the slide here, the seven-year average, including the two point one eight percent, would be one point seven nine percent. Uh, these were the numbers that you used to can make that determination. One, one of the things I did, if I can go back to this, one of the things I did just reinforce with all of our, you know, uh the parent group presentations that I've been able to be part of. Um, is, is just some of the things that we did add at the end of last school year. After the budget was already done, the budgeting was done for this school year, that that increased our spending after the fact, and really those things had to do with safety and security of the schools, uh, the school um, security officers that we do have in every building. And as you, as you all know, we're, we, we have one in each elementary school every day, but we're also going to have a one half day at the high school, half day at the middle school to help with um our new security measures. The TRS rate went down a little bit, teacher retirement system rate, the employee retirement uh system rate went up a little bit. The um, here's just kind of the budget analysis from one way, one year to the next. I usually point out the bottom right-hand side of this because we're gonna talk about it in a second, but those are all of the um reserve revenues that we use to balance the overall budget. Okay? And if you remember, the expenditure budget being eighty-four, four, seventy, three, two, nine, the revenue budget we have coming in is seventy-seven, four, oh, nine, two, nine, six. So how do you make up that seven million dollars? Capital transportation reserve. So part of the expenditure budget is the buses and the vehicles that we want to purchase. Money comes right out of the reserve to pay for those buses, to pay for those vehicles. Capital technology reserve. Money comes straight out of the, the technology reserve to pay for the technology items. Greenway bond and power authority, that those monies come over to pay for our capital project work. That gets us down to about just a little under five million. Host community money is going to our capital project work for a million dollars. Then you can see the other reserves, five hundred thousand for workers' comp, a hundred thousand for employee benefits reserve, the ERS, TRS reserves, one point two million combined. And then appropriating from our unappropriate fund balance, two point one million dollars. That closes the gap. Okay? This is the tax rate review again that Alison puts together. These are based, and these are estimates. That's why it says estimates at the top. The, the true assessments uh that don't come from, from our district or from our office, but this just kind of gives you an idea of what it would mean. These are our reserves moving forward. Okay? Um, it, oh, it's, it's always important for me to say this because people who are listening maybe at home, when you look at the two thousand eighteen capital transportation reserve and right next to it, you see a two thousand twenty-one capital transportation reserve. You say, why do they have two? Why don't they just have one? Each time we set up a reserve, whatever the amount is, in the first case there, the two thousand eighteen, two million dollars, you can only fill it to two million dollars once. Once you've filled it, now you start taking out money from that reserve. Now we're down to nine hundred and thirty-four thousand dollars. Once that money is gone, you can't put money back into that reserve. It goes away. So we had to establish another one. Same thing with the capital improvement reserves. A significant amount of that capital improvement reserve is going into this project that with our twenty-twenty-two project that has already started. Okay, uh, remember, our share of uh, it was a fifty-nine million dollar project, call it sixty for me, because of the simple math. Okay, and you're really talking about um about twelve million dollars of that. Okay, is what we, is what we owe. All right? And UPK, uh, Smitherman asked about that a little bit, a little bit ago. I'm sorry, I said ninety-four was ninety-three new slots. Um, that's the dollar amount. Physical stress. Board of Education, Business Office, thank you for all of your work over all of these years. Um, before I arrived here, um, this district was the most fiscally stressed district in New York State. It took a lot of hard decisions and then a lot of slow building back to get our district to where it is today. But you can see that our um fiscal stress rating has been very low. It was only zero in two years because we got big money back from late payments from New York State. If we're not getting big payments back from New York State because of the liability with the Tuscula Nation School, because we have to pay for that money upfront. Right? We have to pay, and then we get reimbursed. It's considered a economic liability when it comes to fiscal stress. We're, we're really never going to be at zero, but where we are right now is in a very, very good spot. Like the school buses talked about this enough at the other meetings, don't, don't need to spend much more time in it now, but obviously this is going to be a topic for us. Uh, that, that we're gonna talk about a lot in the upcoming years. Thank you. Budget vote board election, Tuesday, May sixteenth, eight AM to nine PM, right here. Any questions? I know it was a repeat for all of you, so. Thank you.
All right, we have uh, any of your board discussion? The whole business. Right, new business? I have to call for motion that be resolved, the Board of Education having considered the May second, two thousand twenty-three appeal, the main first two thousand twenty-three written decision, Superintendent Schools hereby sustains that decision and denies the appeal. Is there a motion and a second for that? Second, moving second, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Post standing. Motion carries. Any other new business? All accounts. Board member counts. All right, I call for motion, future.
So.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those are standing.